Exactly. Yeah, that's how I felt. Because I was like, I didn't get a text message. So I was like, is something like... Yeah, I was wondering if something was like, gosh, you know. Yes, yeah. But thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Okay, now that all the council members are present, I call to order the March 1st meeting of the City of West Sacramento, City Council, West Sacramento Redevelopment Agency, and Finance Authority. We will begin with the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge that the land on which we live, work, learn, and commune is the original homelands of the indigenous people of West Sacramento, who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. We acknowledge and we thank the original inhabitants, who have occupied, maintained, and secured this place, and who still exist on this land. We respect and celebrate the many diverse indigenous people still connected to this land on which we gather. The council did not meet in closed session this evening. We would like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which will be led by our clerk, Jennifer Kuzfia.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for leading us in the pledge, and thank you for all your hard work in bringing us together tonight, and helping us accomplish tonight's meeting, and always. As is noted on our agenda, we are prohibited by state law from discussing or taking any action on items that are brought up under Item 1, but it provides an opportunity for a public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address council on this or any other item this evening, please fill out a request-to-speak card and return it to the clerk. In front of the clerk, there is a timer to ensure that everyone has a chance to be heard. We ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also, in front of the clerk is an analog flip chart, which indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. We accept the request-to-speak cards up to the conclusion of the reading of the staff report on any particular agenda item. Once the staff report has been read, and the council questions and public testimony have begun, we do not accept, further accept, speaking requests on that particular agenda item. If you're addressing a specific agenda item, please turn in your cards as soon as possible, but definitely before the conclusion of the staff report for that particular agenda item. We also recognize that for some, speaking in public can cause anxiety, so we request that there be no applause, or boos, cat calls, or other demonstrations. Furthermore, so that we may maintain the civil discourse, here in the chambers, we ask that those in attendance and those who address the city council abide by the code of conduct posted by the request-to-speak cards and on the podium, and not speak out loud, threatening, offensive, abusive, or other disrespectful language that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. Next is our public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Our first speaker is Kathy Bailey.
Do I go up here? Yes. Hello. My name is Kathy Bailey, and I live in West SAC, and Riva and the River, over on Village Parkway, kind of going towards the new development before you turn to go to Target. And I am the board president of Riva and the River, and we have a situation that's ongoing, and we want to continue to update you and to update the members of the community about our efforts, and about what is happening, about our mailbox thefts. So first, we have some thank-yous, because this is important, that we thank the people that are helping us. And our first thank-you is to Preston Schaub, right there. He's the DA from Yolo that has been on our side since day one. He's continued to work with us. We currently have a man and a woman that is, actually, has a warrant for their arrest, again. And so he has been with us the entire time as his trial for them, for him, has been prolonged because he keeps getting out and keeps getting rearrested, including a mailbox theft in East Sacramento. So Preston, thank you very much for all you do for us. I know I give him a hard time as well. Verna, we want to also thank our city councilwoman, Verna. We were under the impression that Dante was our person for the longest of time, for two years now. So we've always CC'd her, unfortunately, and now we have Verna, so we're very happy that we have a person for our area that is representing us, and we want to say thank you. She came out to our community and spent over an hour with us talking about this situation, looking at our community, and I think that was incredibly important so she could see what our community looks like. We are workers. We are not, you know, a bad neighborhood. We are just kind of middle-of-the-road neighborhood. We're not new. We're 17 years old. And that goes to the, kind of, the age of our mailboxes as well. But she came out and gave us some good brainstorming ideas regarding our mailboxes, so thank you very much for taking your time to come to our community. It was the first time that we've had someone come out, so we really, really thank you for doing that. That's over and above what we thought would happen. Also, we want to thank Mr. Police Officer over there. Since we were on the news, the city of West SAC police have been going around our neighborhood every night. Everybody's telling me that they see them on their Ring cameras, which is very much a kudos to them because now we see there's movement in terms of helping us out. So thank you very much for the guys all coming out. There, in terms of that, we have also got a... I don't know where that time is. Is that done?
Done, yes.
Oh crap. Anyway, Neighborhood Watch, we have people now in our members that we are out there every hour on the hour in the evening because we need to protect our boxes. And since we've done that, we haven't had any stolen mail. So some of the Neighborhood Watch members are here tonight, and we will be out there tonight, all night long. So thank you very much. Please continue to work for our community.
Our next speaker is Robin Davis.
I'm Robin, and I live in my 160-square-foot, semi-off-grid, tiny home on wheels on my undeveloped residential property here in West Sacramento. Over the past several months, I and others have addressed the many ways a tiny home on wheels ordinance can help our city. We have addressed how tinies can increase our housing density with existing infrastructure, and help with meeting arena numbers required by the state. We have addressed the diverse population of people this could help, from veterans, seniors, youth aging out of foster care, students, and many other demographics, including allowing individuals in more disadvantaged communities another path and chance at homeownership. We have addressed solutions around the concerns regarding wheels, and ways we can mitigate the negative stereotyping or fear of more transient residents, like skirting the wheels to create that more cohesive sense of permanence. And we've continued to provide resources, guides, and examples of other policy that has been implemented throughout California. In the next day, we will be sending you some examples of potential options a parcel like mine could look like. We have many undeveloped infill lots in West SAC that could be perfect for tiny homes on wheels as cluster communities to allow multi-generational situations and to maximize density using tiny homes on a variety of foundation options. So we could really, we really like to share more examples that have been done, not just in California, but around the country, including in Arizona and in Texas. I'd like to also expand on the philosophy around tiny homes, and how that differs from RVs and traditional housing. One of the original purposes of tiny homes is to live minimally full-time, which forces you to live more intentionally. Intention with how we spend our money, our time, and in our space. Intention to prioritize people and experiences over materialism. That intention tends to spill over into all aspects of our lives, which has the potential to improve relationships, our environment, our physical health, our mental health, our community, and ultimately, our overall quality of life. Tiny homes on wheels are much more than cute, miniature versions of stick-built homes. For many of us, including myself, they represent safety, security, healing, and freedom. Please use my home, use my property, and use our resources that we've provided to help bring tiny homes on wheels to our city. Thank you.
Savannah Montano.
Good evening, city council, city manager, and staff. My name is Savannah Montano. I'll be speaking for my mom today, Andrea Montano. She has a heart condition that sometimes makes public speaking difficult for her to do. And so I'm here tonight to hold her hand and to be her voice in advocacy as she continues to heal. By now, I hope you, we all know the... Sorry. By now, I hope we have a greater understanding of what movable tiny homes are and what they are not, and how they can help cities and communities they... Sorry. How they can help cities and communities they serve and protect. There have been so many people in this community that have proposed similar ideas for small housing projects, but for one reason or another, the ideas were dismissed or postponed because there were more pressing or immediate priorities needing attention. Long-term funding from state resources is scarce, leaving California lawmakers and staff with the burden of creating more affordable housing with less resources. We are a vulnerable council. Please see us. So many people living at risk and in the margins, with even more people falling through the cracks of our inherited policies. The lack of housing inventory is scary, and the reality is this. Homeownership is becoming harder. Downsizing is no longer an option. People have the means to build traditional ADUs, lack the incentive to share that unit with another family. Multi-generations are being squeezed under the same roof or ripped apart as our loved ones pack their U-Hauls because they can no longer afford to live here. Our quality of life is highly dependent on the environment in which people live in, and that impact, that vulnerability is not your priority until it becomes your experience. When will housing be essential to our infrastructures the way healthcare, education, and transportation are? When will we start to value the essence of home over how successful we scale our economic development commodities that hold our vested interest? We are not numbers. We are not statistics. Please remember our faces. On all rungs of the housing ladder, we are people. If we are a pro-housing designated city, and we don't put people's basic, essential needs first, all other lifelines will soon diminish. Remember that our people are our greatest assets. And together, we can create positive changes that can help the resilience and our faith in humanity. Thank you.
Rhonda Pope Flores.
I thought you would have learned your lesson with the whole mapping issue. But once again, you let us down. Today, you just put those signs up, even though you had 561 people that opposed it. You had a councilwoman who asked to have it brought back for reconsideration. That reconsideration could have been anything. That could have been another street. That could have been a plaque. It could have been anything, but you shut it down. Why? What is going on here that you have to be so strong-willed to have this street named after him? And I tell you that if this man runs for any office in West Sacramento, I'm going to turn this in to the fair political practices because something ain't right here. I don't understand. You say there's no reason, Mr. Laurel, to bring this back to the agenda, but there were. There were 561 reasons to bring it back, and you ignored us. You ignored all your people. Paying attention to my time, because I have a few points to make. It's really a... Man, how many times can you guys do this? Keep ignoring us. That's okay, because you inspire me. You inspire the hell out of me. You make me want to be here every damn meeting, and I will be. You violated the Brown Act. You ignored that. You pretended that you didn't. I don't care what your law firm said. It was a clear violation of a Brown Act. There is video about it. So let's talk about the next important thing, because got to stay a step ahead of you. You have districts now. You can't just do any kind of policies any kind of way. You need to get your act together and get those policies updated so they clearly represent the people, all the people, all the districts. And I don't want to see no packing of houses of any certain district and no representation from District 1. We won't have it. We will not accept it. This is over. This whole business of West Sacramento ignoring the city on that side of the tracks is over. We will not let this continue. If you, we do not have proper representation. We do not have adequate representation on commissions, committees, on whatever it is. I know that there's a couple of people in this room that sit on committees, and I better see them continue to sit on committees. I don't want to see one district overrule the other. And finally, Mr. Laurel, I sure hope that you have your mail documentation, because if I find that you violated that policy where you were supposed to notify all of the agencies, I am all over you. I am very tempted to seek legal after you.
Guy Stevenson.
You know, I come in here all the time, and I've had some very interesting conversations with people that don't agree with any of you people, the people that I talk to. I drive down the street with one of my friends, one of my Marine buddies, and we see this great big lot down here that's supposed to be for public works, and it's supposed to be for parks. And it was built, what, a year ago? Maybe a year ago, and yet they don't use it. It's got state-of-the-art fence. It's got all kinds of charging stations, but you don't use it. You know what that, I call that, they call that wasteful city spending. You guys built it ahead of time. Now you guys can't figure out what you're going to put on there. You keep saying they're going to put those guys on there, but you're not utilizing it. And it's, now you got kids down there doing drifting. And I don't understand it. Then I drive down Sacramento, and I, you know, I feel like I was driving on the moon. These chuck holes, there's a whole slew of them. I was just talking to the chief about it. There's a whole slew of them. But you people, and I'm not saying all of you, but these people in these big departments in the city make $300,000, you know? And then you can't even pay your city workers? Well, I got a little petition going around right now about that little issue. Why don't you give them like $2 or $3 more? Instead of paying these big-city department heads $300,000 when they, you're not even paying these people equivalent to what these people make over here at McDonald's and Burger King. Those people make $18, $19 an hour. And I, you know what? If they think I'm throwing them under the bus, that's fine. That, you know, I don't sugarcoat anything, but I also don't believe in failure. When I was in the Marine Corps, I didn't believe in failure. I believed that if, why build something if you're not going to complete it? I see so many places here in West SAC that are so incomplete. But I go around with taking pictures, and I send them to my state senator. Not to you people. I send them to my state senator. I'm pretty much done with dealing with the city because they don't listen. So now I'm sending it to my state senator and saying, "Look, this is what's going on." I said that you got all these incomplete jobs all over West SAC. They're not getting done, and you're all talking about, "Oh, we don't have any money." Well, why start a project if you don't have the money to complete it? I don't believe in failure. I'm sorry. It's not even in sight with me. I believe in, if you're going to start a job, finish the job. And that's just all there is to it. I have the utmost respect for you people. I just don't believe in your politics. Thank you.
We have no additional requests to speak.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just have a quick question for our city manager about how we handle collective bargaining.
Do you mean just to address the comments about employee compensation? Yeah, I mean, I do want to address that fairly directly because it was brought up last meeting as well. Our employees are not paid $16 an hour. That's just flat-out not true. The maintenance workers, maintenance workers, I believe, start at 24 an hour. They have full benefits. They have collective bargaining. HVAC operators, I believe, start at 36 an hour. We do have part-time staff, and many of them are, for example, seasonal workers, lifeguards, and the like, including some of the part-time parks maintenance workers, that the wage for them may be in that range of 16. It is 16, 16 to 20, based on experience, but it is not true that we pay maintenance workers $16 an hour.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Does anyone here make $300,000 a year?
Not on base salary, no. The salaries are all, my contract's on the website. My base salary is $268,000 a year, and with total compensation, with healthcare and benefits. If you look on Transparent California, it includes all of the total compensation. You'll find numbers that are higher there across all classifications of the city, but no one on a base salary makes close to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have another question about addressing council staff. Just as far as when there's public comment, what is the protocol?
I mean, I think 1A is meant to be an opportunity for the public to address any matter that's not on the current agenda. So there's, you know, a broad spectrum of things that could be addressed there. And, you know, our city attorney tonight, Andres, is here in place of Jeff, who's out today. So, but I think as a matter of practice, you know, we're over here too, and we can be addressed, you know, if people want to address us. But it's really an opportunity to speak to the council, and I think that's a good protocol to work with is when the public is addressing the city council, to have them actually address them. But like I said, they can address any topic that's not on the agenda, so beyond that, I don't know that to add.
Thank you. And any, if there are any, if there's any interest among those who are here speaking publicly that would like to carry the conversation with staff, so it's a two-way dialogue, not a one-way dialogue, because even staff sometimes cannot respond directly to any accusations or... I would encourage to reach out to our city management. They are, have an open-door policy, and all of council is very supportive of that. So I encourage that, so it might address some of the passionate comments that are going on here. So just wanted to mention that as well to those who are speaking here publicly. All right, now that we don't have any more public comment, we have, under Presentations, item number 2 from the city manager's office, Presentation of Proclamation Declaring March 2023 as Women's History Month. And we have beautiful, I'm going to pass it around to all of the council members, which you're all going to be approving tonight, because it references us here. I'll be reading while you're taking a look at that. Whereas American women of every race, class, religious, and ethnic background have made significant contributions to the growth and strength of this country. And whereas American women have and will continue to play a critical role in the economic, cultural, and social fabric of our society by representing a considerable portion of both the paid and volunteer labor force inside and outside of the home. And whereas the 2023 Women's History Month is celebrating women who tell our stories, a recognition of women past, present, and who have been active in all forms of media storytelling, including print, radio, television, stage, screen, blogs, podcasts, news, and social media. And whereas the theme honors women in every community who have devoted their lives and talents to producing art and news, pursuing truth, and reflecting society decade after decade. And whereas women served as early leaders in the forefront of major progressive social change movement, not only to secure their own right of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor union movement, and this modern civil rights movement. And whereas accounts of the lives of individual women are critically important because they reveal exceptionally strong role models who share a more expansive vision of what a woman can do. And whereas learning about the accomplishments of women in history is extremely important to revealing strong role models and helping young girls gain confidence and feel empowered. And whereas in January 2023, West Sacramento City Council made history by becoming one of the six women-only-led councils in the state. And whereas we honor and celebrate the contributions of West Sacramento women who are leaders in our community and contribute immensely to the rich and vibrant city that we enjoy. And whereas women history makers equip, empower, and encourage not only women, but men and the community to believe they can achieve the legacy of many important women needs to live on, so future generations of women can continue to create history. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of West Sacramento does hereby recognize March 2023 as Women's History Month, proclaim this first day of March 2023. Just want to say I'm really proud of this accomplishment, and I'm really proud that we're celebrating Women's History Month in West Sacramento. So with that, I'd like to either accept comments or any thoughts from the public? Any public comment, Madam Clerk? Open it up for public comment?
We have no requests to speak on this item.
Close the public comment, bring it back, and if that, I'll accept a motion to approve this proclamation.
So moved.
Second. All right. Councilmember Alcala moved, and councilmember Early seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Solpezio Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Orozco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda items 3 through 10. Are there any requests to remove an item for questions or a presentation by our administration? I do have item number 6. I'd like to pull. Is the resolution authorizing application for and receipt of pro-housing incentive pilot program? Hi, Row. There's a couple of things I'd like to bring to our city's attention is the incredible work that you've done to achieve the pro-housing designation. And, you know, can you give us a little background about that and share with the community what that means?
Yeah, absolutely. First of all, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Elijah Ortega, staff to the Economic Development and Housing Department in the city. I can talk a little bit about the pro-housing designation program. It's a new program that was stood up last year by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Really, the goal of the program is to recognize cities throughout the state and jurisdictions throughout the state that have gone above and beyond existing state law regarding housing. And the city did submit an application. We were one of the first seven jurisdictions to submit an application and actually be approved and designated as a pro-housing jurisdiction. There's a number of policies and programs that were identified in the application that got us points on that application, including things such as a regular use of our housing trust funds to support affordable housing. Over the past five years, we have utilized our housing trust fund in a number of ways to support low-income affordable rental housing. Things like streamlining projects, things like development incentives for housing. So really, it was, it was a number of different policies and programs that the city identified and, and was recognized by the state of California for ultimately being designated as pro-housing.
Thank you so much, Elijah. And I just want to say I greatly appreciate all your hard work. It's many years of spending time, you know, with those that are interested in developing affordable housing here in the city and all the entire staff, community development staff who've been spending time taking a look at how we can reduce the cost of building because that, compared to Sacramento, and really that's, you know, part of it, is our, our city, sister city across the, the river here. It can be cheaper to build there and then being competitive, we'd like to achieve that and build more affordable housing here. So thank you for all your work in making that happen.
Mayor Gro.
Yes.
If I could just, I, I want to chime in just to both echo your, that first thank you for the compliments to our staff on this designation. I want to just also point out, I think it's very notable that of the, there's what, ten in the whole state? I was at a meeting at Secog earlier this week where the HCD director was in attendance and they noted that of the ten jurisdictions, I think six or seven of them are in the Sacramento region that have this designation. So, so we're proud to have been one of the first, but I think it speaks volumes that, you know, as a region, we're really trying to step up and, and, you know, increase housing supply, affordable housing supply. And, and that's not overlooked at the state level. So it's something that we're, we're looking to leverage now to put more meaning behind this pro-housing designation. So it's beyond just points on grant applications, but and, and Secog is, is definitely on board with that. I'll talk about Green Means Go a little bit later, but I just want you to know it's, it's, this isn't the, the end of it, just this application. We're hoping to leverage it for other ways too.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Elijah. All right. With that, if we don't know other items, I'll, I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Right. Councilmember Early moved and Mayor Protem Roscoe seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Solpezio Hull.
Aye.
Councilmember Early.
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Roscoe.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. All right. This item, this is, consent agenda is approved. And one thing I did leave out was an opportunity for public comment on the consent agenda. Madam, I'll open it up for public comment. Are there any requests to speak?
We have a request to speak on item five, Rhonda Pope Flores.
So I see this item and I see the riverfront extension. And I'm going to echo my same old sentiments. You're doing all this work and you don't have a historic preservation policy. You're, you're talking about very sensitive areas. You know, let me give you a little bit of my background. Okay, I have very extensive background on cultural monitoring, archaeological resources, historic resources. Our tribe has our own historic preservation officer that I work very closely with. And you're talking about working along the riverfront. Riverfront is always going to be a very sensitive area. I don't even know if you have cultural monitors when you're doing that work. You should. I'm hoping that Yocha steps in and, and takes on that responsibility. But it's very sensitive areas along the riverfront. You're going to find things. Guess why? That acknowledgement that you do, where do you think, where do you think all of our people were along the rivers? We moved, but along the rivers especially. So you're going to find items there. If you do not have certain policies in place, historic preservation, cultural resources, I don't even know if you have that. And what do you, what, what happens if you uncover something? You find remains. Because I know I was on a project over in West Sacramento on that housing development that you grandfathered in for, that, that had been already twenty years in and you grandfathered it in. And guess what? You uncovered remains over there. You had our ancestors sitting on a plastic bag. And I came to this office in West Sac and I stood, well, let me back up. I stood in front of the tractor to stop the tractor one. And then I came directly here. That's when I uncovered that you had none of these policies in place. So I'm going to urge you as, as you go, you guys are just so obsessed with developing the riverfront. And that's fine, but be responsible about it. You're going to get yourselves in trouble. You're going to get yourselves in trouble when you uncover human remains, archaeological resources or any of those sensitive items. Your work will stop. You're going to have to consult with the tribe and the tribe can either work with you nicely or they can hold you up as long as they want. So for your own good and your own sanity, develop these policies and plans. This is to benefit all of you, all of us. So please, I urge you, develop some policies on this.
Thank you, Ms. Morningstar Pope Flores. I, I would like to ask a question. Did you have a comment? Go ahead. Oh, okay. From city manager about this. This is very important to, I think, all of council.
Do you want me to just address the comment? And just to note, because of the procedural process there, we'll go ahead and have the council take another vote on item five just because of the public comment.
Okay, we will do that.
On the advice of the city attorney.
I see.
So yeah, I, I'd like to get, if Ryan or someone from Capital Projects could approach the podium while I'm starting the response here. The city absolutely has policies and protocols we follow that we're required to follow. We do, anytime we dig and do underground work, we have cultural monitors in place for these projects. Ryan, if you want to go ahead and elaborate on that, please do.
Sure. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. To address the question that the public had, we do have monitors in place. We've consulted with the tribes and they are onsite while we're working on the riverfront street extension project. In addition, any excavation work that's taking place, we do have cultural training that takes place. So all of the contractors and workers that are onsite, they do receive a, a training from the tribe before beginning any work.
Okay. Any questions among the councilmembers? Yes. Mayor Protem Roscoe.
Thank you. In the case that under construction, there is an item of interest that is excavated or discovered, what's the protocol at that juncture?
Yeah, sure. So per the environmental document, we do have a protocol and procedures in place if there are any remains or any discoveries during construction and which we consult with the tribes. We stop all construction, consult with the tribes and we determine what the best course of action is to move forward.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Are, are policies and procedures publicly available?
Per the environmental document, yes, those are available.
Where can you find them?
So they can be found on city website or we can make them available. If a request is sent in for them, we can provide those.
Okay, so on our website and/or publicly accessible by request as well?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. That was going to be my question too. And I just, you know, wanted to make a note that our arts commission also involves historic preservation as well. And so that commission, it includes this conversation. So I agree with Madam Mayor. So thank you for mentioning that importance for the entire council.
Councilmember Alcala.
I, I just had a question. So you said they have some sort of training. How long is that training?
So the training is provided by the tribe and it can range in length. Typically a two-minute where they go through the process if there is a discovery. But again, it's at the discretion of the monitor how long the training will be.
Okay, thank you. All right. I think that answers everybody's questions. And if you can just take a seat for a second, we have one more request to speak on this item. Madam Clerk?
Guy Stevenson. Okay. We have no additional requests to speak.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We will close the public comment and bring it back to council for a vote on item number five.
So moved.
All right. Madam Clerk, councilmember Early moved. Mayor Protem seconded. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Solpezio Hull.
Aye.
Councilmember Early.
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Roscoe.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye. All right. Thank you. I received a message that the, that the live feed is off on tonight's council meeting.
Yeah, we're, we're aware of that issue and it's being worked on by IT right now. So hopefully we'll have that restored. But can assure the public, the meeting is still being recorded and will be posted after.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's just a live feed. Thank you.
All right. We have no public hearing or items under our regular agenda. And next we will go to item eleven, which is general administration function, part two. We have reports from our council assignments. I don't have anything to report. I just wanted to ask if anybody else.
No.
Somebody does? Okay. Next, we have council appointments, which are scheduled today. And I will ask, I'll try to keep track of this. I'm going to try to keep track of everybody's appointments and their recommendations. What I'm going to do is ask, I'll start to my left, councilmember Solpezio Hull, if you can give me what your recommendations are and then I'll go to my right.
Okay. So do you just want me to read, start reading down?
We'll start, yes, with, just let me know which commission and then what your recommendations are.
Okay, so I've got arts at the top of the list. Would you like to go there?
Yes.
Okay. Amon de George as an alternate, Albert Lowey Ball, Cheryl Gleason.
Oh, can you slow it down so I can keep track?
Sorry.
Cheryl Gleason, okay.
Okay. Carla Hanson, Don Peterson, Michael Sanchez, Peggy Bell, Restina Rodriguez. Do you, do you want to go by commission, Mayor? Because what I would say is I have the same.
Okay.
Yeah, that was very similar to your recommendations as well.
It's pick seven and one alternate. So that would be eight. Did I miss one? Miss, so it's Amon, Albert, Cheryl, Carla, Don, Peggy and Restina.
I got Michael Sanchez as well. I'm sitting here looking at the list.
Okay, good. Okay. So, oh, okay, we'll go by each commission. And that's.
I think it might be easier to go by commission?
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay. And.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I will. I'm sorry. This is quite an unusual process that I've not experienced in the last six years being on this council. I'm wondering how we're going to resolve any discrepancies, if there are any.
Oh, thank you so much for bringing this up.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Let me go back and explain the process for.
I'm new to.
Yes.
Same.
For establishing commission appointments. Historically, what has happened in the past, the mayor would ask and reach out to the council members and ask for recommendations. That was brought back and then the mayor would make the recommendations and there would be a vote taken and approved. This time, I had worked and I wanted to say I appreciate the city clerk and the staff and all their work to put together a SharePoint document towards the end of December, which gave all the council members a chance to view recommendations. And that was since the end of December. And since then, I, we, we were hopefully hoping to get appointments made either at the end of, you know, the January or February meeting. So the January meeting was canceled. So we, we were hoping to get it done in the February meeting. And council members have requested more time to be able to do interviews. And that's part of the process is members of the public are, are, you know, they're new and we would like to get acquainted with them and understand their interest to serve and help to identify which commission would be appropriate. Sometimes they have one or two other recommendations where they like to be appointed. So we try to fit them in as many as we can. What staff had also did, which was a great idea, which was include the districts for each of the individuals that have submitted an application. So that way, now that we have districts, a vote by district fifty-fifty, we can also see how we can have equitable representation across the city on each of these commissions. So with that, we are able to see, and that's, I think, one of the other ideas I, I wanted to point out. When we, when we went, I can mention it or, you know, I can have you mention it, but we can also reference which district, the recommendations you are submitting. The individuals reside. And then we're not going to give out addresses or anything like that, but the districts where they reside.
What are the districts they think they reside in?
They don't know which districts they reside in.
No, this was self, self attestation.
Madam Clerk?
When we put the application up online, a link was provided for members of the public to be able to look up their district by address. And we tried to verify the applications as they were submitted. There may have been few that got through that were not verified or confirmed, but we're working on streamlining this process.
Okay. Well.
I mean, they tried.
We can, we can still reference the district.
Yeah.
I think that, I think more or less, I mean, you can say one is in four and definitely not in one. And, and they may be in three or, you know, but they're in the general ballpark of three and four.
Somewhere in the south or somewhere in the north.
Somewhere in the south and somewhere in the north. Correct. Exactly. And so with that, I'd like to be able to provide, and so this process is going on today because I received councilmember Alcala's recommendations and councilmember Solpezio Hull's recommendations. So I haven't received everybody's. I would like to make sure, I do, to continue to honor the process, that we have consensus and inclusive to make sure that everybody's recommendations are included. I was hoping to be able to see the recommendations on our SharePoint document that staff had prepared. And we were constantly communicating and trying to work out ways to get the feedback so that we can. That's why this is a unique new process with our new council members here. And I think councilmember Early, this is your first time in the process.
This is. I did upload mine on the shared drive. I also looked yesterday evening to see if you had anyone else. I didn't see anyone. I was fiercely checking everyone's folder, but I didn't see anyone's. But that's okay.
Okay, so it didn't work in the shared drive?
Nope, but that's all right.
That's good to know.
Like you said, we're trying.
Yes.
Yes. It's okay.
All right. Well, I was, I was checking in and thought I might have been missing something.
I did, I did look for yours too because I was like, I want to make sure I'm on, I'm on point with the bear.
I don't, I, I think that this process is to keep it fairly open for all of us to ensure that the recommendations that we are going to be voting on tonight
That's good.
achieves the consensus and of all the council members. I think that's important to have.
Let's go.
Okay. Does that help?
I hope so.
Okay. Okay. So let's see. So the. Did you finish?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So we're going arts.
Okay, great. Okay, these are my recommendations. I wanted to make certain that people from District One who had applied were going to be considered for all these commissions. It's really important. We've generally been underrepresented there. So I'll start off with Cheryl Gleason, District One, and Michael Sanchez, District One.
Okay. And those are your two choices?
Those are the two choices that I have for districts. I think it's appropriate.
Okay.
I'm confused. Only, she's only making two recommendations.
I only made two recommendations. I don't know the other individuals on there. I did read them. I know everyone who applied and has a great passion for wanting to serve on these commissions, great credentials, great backgrounds in terms of, you know, other things that they do within the city. I'm more familiar with people in District One who reached out to me. So those are the two that I recommended.
Everybody okay with that?
Go for it, Vernon.
Good. We're still in arts. So arts is.
I just, so I'm going to make recommendations for all, all seven with an, with an alternate because I, because one, I, I feel like I've gotten to know the community at large because I've ran at large before in addition to that. And two, also because community members at large reached out to me because this represents not only our districts, but also our entire city. Also, as I, I feel like I've, I've, I've said before, I, I think it's important that we not only represent our districts, but our, our entire city. And as our city is trying to get comfortable with this new district process, I think there's going to be a phase-in process. Two of us right now are district elected. The other two councilmembers are at large. And so I think that's important to, to reflect on and, and realize as well.
I do have other recommendations of people in different districts of the other commissions.
Okay, that makes me feel better because I was like.
No, no, no. It's just, we, right.
Okay, perfect.
What, do you want to do them all? That way you can see the whole picture. I mean.
No, I think we should do it by only because we can finish and.
Sure.
Knock them out.
Are we being delimited to a certain number of recommendations or we could just say we take the whole slate?
You can say you take the whole slate if you, the whole slate?
Or, I mean.
We just trying to get.
Can you specify to how many selections per, like, commission so that we know or to limit our recommendations?
On this, for the arts, we can pick seven and one alternate. Madam Clerk, I think that's a total of eight, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay. And I will add, this is a time-consuming process and I appreciate all the councilmembers' energy and effort to, to achieve this.
Quick question.
Sure.
I think I'm going to echo Mayor Protem Roscoe's question. How are we going to resolve if there's, if we're not all on the same page and how are we going to achieve consensus? Because we have eight of these to go through.
I would say so far we got arts and we have consensus. I don't.
I don't think we do because I haven't heard your recommendations.
Cheryl Gleason and Michael Sanchez. I'm, I'm going to be very open to your recommendations. I'm, I'm going to appreciate, you know.
So, so tell me process again. So we'll make our recommendations and then are you then going to then say what you would like to then your names and then we vote on that?
I may, I may make a suggestion if there's a significant variation just to discuss it. I mean, I think this is an opportunity for all of us to have a, you know, a discussion and, and look at alternatives as a possibility. But I think if there's consensus for what I'm seeing here, there's consensus on the arts commission. Although I do see seven and I think we need one more.
Again, so I have Amon de George. Again, so I have Amon DeGeorge...
Oh, yes, we do. We have it, you're right. Yeah, you corrected me on that.
Cheryl Gleason, Carla Hanson, Dawn Peterson, Michael Sanchez, Peggy Bell, Rustina Rodriguez, with Amon DeGeorge being the alternate.
Okay.
That's what I saw and heard.
That's what I, you're right, that's what you heard.
Okay.
Okay. And Mayor Protamorosco, are you looking at this?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
For arts, I have Rustina Rodriguez. And I also want to reiterate that I am an at-large representative of this community. I am sensitive of making sure that there is representation throughout our city and not concentrated specifically in any one particularly activated community. And as a veteran member of this council, I've seen concerted effort by every council, specifically, it was a priority, I know, under the prior mayor's supervision, that we activate and target the north side of this community on purpose, so that way we could help breed the communication and leadership throughout our city. Because traditionally, it is the southern portion of the community where people have stepped forward and offered their contribution and leadership, so we wanted to make sure of that. And I do see that throughout the applicants, if we were looking at districts, there are far more from three and four, many from District One, but fewer from District Two. And again, I'm not choosing specifically for District Two. I'm specifically choosing throughout. So for arts, I have Rodriguez, Bell, who has served throughout my tenure on the council, Michael Sanchez, Dawn Peterson, who I served with in Parks, District Three, Carla Hanson, I have DeGeorge. And how many is that? Seven? Five, six? I have DeGeorge, so DeGeorge, and then Lori Ball, Lowie Ball.
Seven? And you said Gleason, by the way? Did I miss that?
I did.
Okay, that's eight, all right. So Amon DeGeorge is from District Three, Albert Lori Ball is from District Four, Cheryl Gleason is one, Carla Hanson is four, Michael Sanchez is one, Peggy Bell is four, and Rustina Rodriguez is two. I think that provides a good representation among all the districts. Would the council agree?
Yeah, I think so.
I think that's great.
I just want to flag what I think is also going to be important. As much as we want to make sure we have full representation across our districts is the number of folks who've applied and the number of folks who have applied to have the necessary background for some of these commissions as well.
I agree.
As much as I would love to just close my eyes and point to a district, I, that's not what I'm doing. Just, I just want to flag that.
Understandable.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes, makes a lot of sense. And so with that, is it everybody okay to move on from arts to appeals? And I just want to say, I want to also add, Councilmember Mayor Protamorosco, that staff did extend the period of time. And I've heard from individuals of the community who are not in social media, who did receive in their utility bill enough, you know, requests to apply. And so in conversing with potential candidates here, that they were, that they received the information.
Yeah, I think we've done.
So I think that helped, that helped to get more, a more diverse representation.
I think, definitely from when it was open before. I think the other issue is that I, I just think we're going to need, continue to need more activation and engagement in Districts One and District Two moving forward, because it's not as if there are not very, very qualified folks. I think some of the work that we did during our strategic planning regarding the Citizens Academy, is that what it was?
That's what we, yes.
I'm really looking forward to that, to just engage, engage, and then hopefully use our network. I certainly sent it out to every Elkhorn parent I possibly could. Please apply. But it also is a time commitment, so I get that.
Right, right. I think, I'm looking forward to that as well, to enhancing, you know, engagement among the community members. All right, next is, we can move forward to appeals.
Would you like me to start?
Yes.
Okay. So Harry Hines from District Three, Shanna Levine from District Four, and Diane Gould, District Four. I'm recommending we, my choice would leave the two spots vacant, and the alternative vacant, and open it up specifically to seek district representation in District One and Two, because we didn't have anybody else from the list that I was looking at that you recommended, Madam Mayor. So we have some more representation on that, if possible.
Okay. And I think that's a very good recommendation, but I have Harry Hines, Shanna Levine, Diane Gould, and Linda Vasquez.
Linda Vasquez. Okay. Time to do that again?
Linda Vasquez.
All right.
You ready?
Yes.
So I did put Linda Vasquez on something, but I put her on something else, so I don't have her here on appeals. I did fill all of mine. I looked at those who listed appeals as a second option as well, trying to pull from everyone, because I was also trying to get district representation where I could. So I have Harry Hines, Shanna Levine, Diane Gould, William Hutchinson, and Warris Banks. Hopefully I said their names correctly. And then Warris Banks is from District Two. As far as I can tell, we did not have a District One applicant. So I'm suggesting here, I tried to fill everything up, and then we leave the alternate vacant.
Okay. So Linda Vasquez, since it's out of, I have to go look them up, is, what was her primary? If I can find her.
I think it was EDH, and so I did put her, I don't know actually if that's their pronouns. I did put them in their...
William Hutchinson?
William Hutchen.
Hutchen, okay.
Is what I suggested, and then Warris Banks.
And William, sorry, which district is William in?
Four.
Four, okay. And then Laura Banks is two.
Yeah, W-A-R-I-S, Banks. I'm saying all your government name on recording.
Okay. Mayor Protamorosco?
Yes, I have Gould, Hines, Levine, Vasquez, and Banks.
We're good with that? For appeals, is everybody okay with that? We have consensus?
I am, but I just, so is it just, once we reach consensus, are we saying, if that's who we did, then we're moving on? And that's basically who you would recommend and who we would be voting on?
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
Yes.
I got us.
All right, thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, could you review that list one more time? Because I did have Linda Vasquez on a different commission, and so I want to make sure what consensus looks like right now.
Oh, yeah, you might have to change yours. Okay, so Harry Hines, Shanna Levine, Diana Gould, Linda Vasquez, William Hutchinson, and then Laura Banks.
So, so you don't have consensus for me? I want, I'm putting Linda Vasquez on EDH.
Oh, you're putting her?
Yeah. Not on appeals.
So, Mayor Protamorosco, are you okay with that?
I think we have three votes. Oh, wait, we have two votes for Vasquez?
You put Linda Vasquez in here.
I did.
So I'm not putting Vasquez, me. So I'm just saying, I don't have consensus there. I'm, I'm not putting Linda in appeals. She has a nice resume. Are we going to talk about qualifications now?
I have Linda on EDH as well.
Okay.
Which was my question, how are we going to resolve this? Didn't seem like it would be a straightforward process, that's all.
Do we want to pull the resume?
Yeah, do you want to pull the resume? Sure.
I don't know.
Anybody?
We're going to do this publicly. No problem.
I will, I can share the resume. EDH. Thank you. You can see I made a lot of choices over and over on my page. A lot of scribbling. She has it, you don't have. The resume.
So the, I have, again, Linda Vasquez. I have your packets, thank you, Jennifer, for putting these things together. And I'm finding her in the Economic Development and Housing Commission packet. And so just don't worry, everyone, if they have it. You want me to detail some of it?
Sure.
Okay. So, again, the primary application this person was submitting for was Economic Development and Housing. Some of their community experience and affiliations. They are the alumni of the Hispanas Organized for Political Equality and Education Policy Fellowship Program. Board member for the California State University Fulton Alumni Association Board of Directors. And, of course, they currently reside in West SAC. Any other city boards? Board member of the California State University Fulton Alumni Association Board of Directors. And then... Do you want me to keep going? I don't know the best way to do this.
You can continue, if you'd like. Do you think the council members are needing more information at this time?
No, I think I'll remove my vote for appeals, because I do think she might be suited.
That's what I was going to say, too.
You recommend also a great...
Very good.
This was work, I'm telling you. I was all in these things.
Very good. All right, then she will be removed. So we have, let's go back to who we have now. Harry Hines, Shanna Levine, Diana Gould, William Hutchinson, and Laura Banks.
Warris, I think.
Warris.
Yeah, Warris.
Warris Banks.
Yeah, with a W.
Warris Banks. Okay, Warris I had in transportation. And that's because that's his only form of public, he, he lives in Mercy Housing, and he also, you know, commutes a lot in public transportation as a way to get to work. He actually found employment in a local area, works closely with the county and the city as far as being able to be a success in Mercy Housing.
So do you, Madam Mayor, do you want to, I wouldn't, we could keep two positions vacant and then just not have District Two representation there? And then, I did not have Warris for my transportation, but I personally wouldn't mind putting him as them, I don't know their pronouns, them as an alternate for my transportation, because in my transportation, it was vacant.
Oh, really? Okay, good. All right. That was just a recommendation that I had, based on Warris, who's, even whenever there's public engagement, he shows up and gets really involved in the community. So, okay, then we'll leave it vacant. We have then two vacancies, and the alternate vacant at this time. Is that where we're at?
Yeah. And then when we get to transportation, like I said, we can have a discussion, but I will put, I'm going to put Warris in my alternate for transportation.
Sounds good, thank you. For disaster, can we move on to disaster now? Okay, disaster.
Yes, so I have Al, oh goodness, you're going to kill me for this. Because, is that though? For District Four? Yes. Mayor Protam, are you going to correct me?
I said Casiato.
Casiato, thank you. And then Fred Bustillos for District Two, as the alternate.
Same.
Same.
Same. All right, we're all good there. We can move on to Economic Development and Housing.
I have Andrew Kim, District Three, Chris White, District Three, Ernest Guerra, District Three, Yaswinder Singh, District Three, Linda Vasquez, District Four, Stephen Cutie, District Four, Tomas Rodriguez, District One, Colin Kemp as the alternate, District Three.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to say those again. So that I can catch up. Okay.
I'll just do names this time, okay? So Andrew Kim, Chris White, Ernest Guerra, Yaswinder Singh, Linda Vasquez, Stephen Cutie, Tomas Rodriguez. And then Colin Kemp as alternate.
Got that. Okay. Yes?
I'm for all those.
Yes, okay. Mayor Protamorosco?
I have Kim, District Three, Kemp, District Three, Perez, District Four, White, District Three, Guerra, District Three, Vasquez, District Four, Cutie, District Four, Rodriguez, District One.
So the only... And Yaswinder? There was one that I heard. Did you also?
No. Oh, I didn't, but not opposed.
Okay. We have Yaswinder and Perez, that I think is, is that the difference that I'm noticing from everybody?
Yes, and I had had Yaswinder on mine, so it sounds like...
And I heard...
I had Yaswinder as well.
I'm, I'm fine with, you know, Councilmember Sopiso-Holz's recommendations. I think it provides diversity as well.
Okay.
But I appreciate adding Perez. I mean, that's, Councilmember Sopiso-Holz's district representative as well.
We have Tomas Rodriguez on there?
Yes, we do.
I did, yeah.
Very good. He's on our list. Okay, so we will, I will mention here, the final recommendations will be Andrew Kim, Colin Kemp is the alternate, Chris White, Ernest Guerra, Yaswinder Singh, Linda Vasquez, Stephen Cutie, and Tomas Rodriguez. Okay, we're all good with that?
Yeah, consensus, yes.
Environment. Oh my goodness, okay.
Alexandra McFaul, District One, Dana Cordono, District Two, Heath Ciliano, District One, Matt Criswell, District Four, Peter Blondo, District Three, Suzanne Reed, District One, and then alternative, our alternate is David Julian, District Three.
Okay, so let me see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Was Tiffany Solario on there?
No. Oh, wait, oh, sorry, sorry, page two. I apologize. Tiffany Solario, District Four.
Okay, was on, okay, because that's...
Sorry, I didn't have my phone count.
That's okay, I'm just looking at my list.
That, Councilmember Early, are you...
Just to make sure, I have McFaul, D1, Cordono, D2, Julian, D3, Cialino, I think I said that right, D1, Criswell, D4, Blondo, D3, Reed, D1, Solario, D4. Is that what you have?
Yes.
Okay, and then my alternate, I think we had the same alternate, Julian, from D3? Okay, awesome.
All right, I'm fine with that.
Okay, good.
Good then. Okay.
I think I have all of them.
Got a lot of representation from D1 on there.
McFaul, Cordono, Julian, Ciliano, Blondo, Reed, and Solario.
Okay.
And, yeah.
Consensus on that one? Next is Parks.
Okay, sorry. Aruj Ahmad, District Four, Alexandra Galvin, District Three, David Janz, District Three, Don Schatzel, District Four, Jaclyn Green, District Four, Matthew Hargrove, District Four, Rene Maldonado, District Two, and then John Draxler, District Four.
And your alternate?
John Draxler.
John.
So I have a slight difference.
Okay.
So I have Aruj Ahmad, D4, Alexandra Galvin, D3, David Janz, D3, I have Don Schatzel from D4 as my alternate, Jaclyn Green, D4, Matthew Hargrove, D4, Rene Maldonado, D2, and then Sasha Horitz, D4.
So not John Draxler?
I didn't have, John Draxler? Sorry.
Did I hear, John, you picked John Draxler, right? John Draxler.
Was not on my list, no.
Was not on your list.
But I'm, I'm open.
Sasha was your alternate?
Don Schatzel from D4 was my alternate.
I don't know how I'm going to keep track of that.
But again, I'm, I'm totally open.
Okay. Okay. Mayor Protamorosco?
Thank you. I have Ahmad, District Four.
Yes?
David Janz, District Three. Matthew Hargrove, District Four. Jaclyn Green, District Four, Bill Hinkle, District Four, Rene Maldonado, District Two, Rosalyn Ramsey, District Two, and Don Schatzel, District Four. Sorry, I also, I think, one, two... See? That's it? That's eight? Okay.
Okay, I have, um, Emiliano Rosas, District One.
Emiliano Rosas, okay.
Emiliano Rosas, uh-huh. Uh, John Archuleta, One, Aruj Ahmad, District Four, Alexandra Galvin...
Let me just catch up, Aruj, District Four. Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Uh-huh, Alexandra Galvin, District Three, David Jans, District Three, Don Schatzel, District Four, um, and Rene Maldonado, District Two, and Rosalyn Ramsey, District Two.
Okay, the overlaps I see are in Aruj Ahmad. So we have that, David Jans, Don Schatzel, uh, Rene Maldonado, and... Those are the overlaps that I see. Let me go over that again, Aruj, David, Don, and Rene.
I think you also, if I heard correctly, both Roscoe and myself and, um, Sopio Hall called out Matthew Hargrove as well. So I think you have...
Right, I'm just, I'm just taking out the ones that we were all...
All, oh, okay.
The ones that, and then, and then from there we'll go down.
All right.
Yeah, okay, so Aruj, um, David, Don, and Rene. And then, um, Rene is in District Two, which is great, and then, um, Aruj is in District Four. David is in District Three, Don is in District Four. Um, so that's what we have. Now, do we have anybody from District One?
Emiliano and John Archuleta. Emiliano Rosas? And John Archuleta. We have no one from District One.
So those are the two recommendations from District One. Are, is there any interest to appoint anybody from District One? Parks being a very, Parks and Rec being a very...
That's gonna be, I think it's really important, we have someone from District One. I mean, we have Bright Park out there and, you know, we need to have some representation. We haven't had it previously from out in the, uh, in the North Area.
Pulling out the resumes.
Okay.
Norma, is there, is there something about maybe Emiliano you wanna, you wanna tell us about or?
When I was on the school board, Emiliano was always very active out there. I mean, when we went and built the, um, the Jiboom Park, I know he was out there, you know, with everyone else. Um, he has always been, um, active in our community. I think everyone knows Emiliano, and he, he grew up in the area, you know, his, um, his activism started when, you know, he was in, in junior high and all through high school. Came, I think, to every school board meeting that we had. I think it's important that we have that representation. John Archuleta has been fantastic, he's lived here all his life. He's been a big advocate, um, for Bright Park as well. And I've been out there with him and other community actors from District One. We've been, you know, getting rid of the graffiti and out there, um, actually, I think there were some out at one of the parks. And John out, went out there with his crew, that's real commitment. So I really want to consider these two individuals to be on Parks.
Just to add that, John Archuleta is a local mental health board member, um, as well. And, uh, so he's been advocating, um, on behalf of the county, an appointee of Oscar Villegas. Sorry, Gary Sandy, not Oscar Villegas, um, because he lives in that district. Um, and, uh, so an appointee of Gary Sandy to the local mental health board. Um, but in addition to that, he pitched to get funding for, um, for Bright Park to the county. Um, and then, and then Supervisor Villegas issued a check, you know, demonstrating the ARPA funds. That's what, John was here when we were, um, when there was a local convening to determine what are the priorities for the ARPA funding in West Sacramento, and he was pitching for Bright Park, knowing that that was a priority.
I am, I think Rosas would be fantastic for Parks. I just think, uh, it's a question of who, who else, who would be removed? I'm not asking that question so we could announce it, but, um, I'm willing to support Emiliano Rosas, and I think that's a, a good argument, that we have some major projects upcoming, and I do understand that he is, he's been pretty active, so...
I could support Emiliano Rosas. Um, I had, I had Don Satchel as my, as my alternate, so I could put Emiliano in, at least on mine.
Okay, thank you.
But I would love to hear from Councilmember Sopio Hall on that. Did you, I don't remember who your alternate was.
Her alternate was, was it John Draxler? Pardon, my microphone is off.
Emiliano for a permanent member, not alternate, correct? Yes, you're right. Good call out.
Okay. I support that.
So who do you, who on your list, um, perm?
So after that, we have the three on Alexandra Galvin, which I'm very supportive of. And the three on Jaclyn Green, she's in District Four, Alexandra's in District Three, Matt Hargrove is in District Four, and Ro- Rose, Rosalyn Ramsey is in District Two. She's, I think, I think she's good to have a good representative from District Two. She's, and she's heavily enrolled, isn't she involved in preparing, um, Rosie, who does the, um, big park event?
But I like that she is representative of...
Rosie, she, okay, the reason why, um, I think, uh, I think Rosie's a, um, great recommendation as well because I think she would like to go out in the community and experience firsthand. She has, uh, she has a disability, so she has a ve- a unique interest in making sure that, um...
Our parks are accessible.
Our parks are accessible, which I think...
So, yeah, I'll mention John Draxler is in a wheelchair. And one of the reasons he was my alternate as well.
Okay. Well, um...
So what about Jaclyn Green? Jaclyn Green is a mother, um, she lives near one of the parks. She's been, um, very active in the community and trying to get more engaged, you know, as we talk about prior- prioritizing family, family-friendly parks. Um, that's why she was a priority for me.
Okay.
How many did Dave Jans get for our support?
Um, David Jans, uh, received everybody. He's on there.
Okay.
He's on. So I have Ahmad.
It's, I, I'm pretty sure Ahmad is also a mother?
She's, she's in there. She's in.
Okay, yeah, she's in.
And then Galvin?
A young, I think, a young person.
Okay, that's two. And then David Jans, Don Schatzel, um, Jaclyn Green, Rene Maldonado, Rosie Ramsey, um, and Emiliano Rosas.
And, and we had Matthew Hargrove.
Matthew Hargrove. I haven't mentioned Matthew because that was the three. But we can put, if we put Matthew, we have to take somebody out.
We do have to take somebody out.
Yeah. So it's either Rosie Ramsey. I think that's where there's, the Councilmember, um, Mayor Potemar Roscoe, that was your selection.
Um, can you remind me on the list you had who was the alternate?
Because I think she's your two. Who was the alternate?
Yeah.
There were two alternates, Don Schatzel and John Draxler, which John received only one recommendation, and that's...
That's mine.
That's, okay. We take, should we take them out?
You can.
Okay. The alternate is Don Schatzel at this point. That's the only alternate that I've heard.
Okay.
So we have Aruj, um, Alexandra, David Jans, Don Schatzel, Jaclyn Green, Matthew Hargrove, Rene Maldonado, Rosie Ramsey, and Emiliano Rosas. So that is eight, nine, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So we have to eliminate one. And Emiliano's only from District One. We have District Two from Rosie Ramsey and Rene Maldonado, District Two, Matthew Hargrove, District Four, Jaclyn Green, District Four, Don Schatzel, District Four, David Jans, District Three, Alexandra Galvin, District Three, and Aruj Ahmad, District Four. We have several District Fours. Where do you, how do you want to narrow the list down? What do your, what are your recommendations?
My recommendation, um, because you have Jaclyn Green and Aruj Ahmad from District Four representing moms with children, I, um, would suggest picking one.
Okay. Well, there was consensus for Aruj Ahmad, um, Jaclyn, um, and not Jaclyn, so...
Mm-hmm.
What, what is, but that's, um, so we had, um, what would you, what was...
It's okay.
What's your choice?
Uh, I, oh, I, I, well, my consensus was around Aruj, I, I didn't put up Jaclyn, yes.
It was as well.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Confirming that it was consensus around Aruj.
Mm-hmm, okay. Okay, so we take out Jaclyn Green.
Mm-hmm.
Is that okay with everybody?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Madam Clerk, I'm sorry for all these notes, it's all scribbles everywhere.
Jaclyn Green.
Are you catching up?
Thank goodness for recordings.
Okay, so let me go over this one more time. Aruj Ahmad, Alexandra Galvin, David Jans, Don Schatzel is the alternate, uh, Matthew Hargrove, Rene Maldonado, Rosie Ramsey, and Emiliano Rosas. Are we all okay with that?
Hmm.
Okay. We move on to planning. Okay.
Brenda Wong, District Two, Dolores Oliveras, District Four, Elizabeth Esquivel, District Three, Imnabil Ferras, District Four, Preston Jackson, District Three, Tammy Linker, District One, Terracita Sablon, District Four, and alternate, an alternate, Irvin Squires, District Two.
An alternate is Irvin?
Correct.
Okay. I'll go.
Um, yes, please. For planning, I have Alex Hirsch, District Four, Andrew Mittelman, Three, Brenda Wong, Two, Danny Theracool, Two, Kelly Brown, One, Matthew Delgado, One, Vanessa Castro, One, Sabrina DeMayo, Three.
Okay. Councilmember early?
Um, okay, I have Brenda Wong, Dolores Oliveras, Elizabeth Esquivel, Irvin Squires, Imnbal Ferras, Preston Jackson, Tammy Linker, and I'm gonna open this up a little bit more, uh, Terracita Sablon. So I have, let's see, D1, D4, D3, D2, D4, D3, D1, D4.
Okay, okay. Before we go forward on Elizabeth Esquivel, um, I, I believe we had some communication with, um, legal counsel about a conflict of interest discussion.
I think the issue there, uh, is, uh, the concern about incompatible office. If a, if a, a member of the Planning Commission in particular is holding, uh, public office for a different agency, elaborate on that.
Yeah, so the question wasn't a conflict of interest as the city manager said it was incompatible office. And so right now, we're checking whether or not she may have withdrawn her application from the Planning Commission based on the advice she received from the county and from us.
I see, I, she informed me that she withdrew her application, so that's the reason why.
Oh, she did?
She informed me, yes, okay.
We're trying to confirm that right now.
Can you, okay. Did you want to, anybody want to check with her? Okay, we can continue on in the discussion in the meantime while somebody's checking here. Um... Looking at, we have, um, consensus on Brenda Wong so far. I haven't heard from Mayor Potemar Roscoe, but just gonna start out there.
Say that again, I'm so sorry, I was trying to reach out, but...
Did you want, did you want to finish the text? I'll let you go next.
No, I'm done. I, you, I just wanted to repeat what you just said because I...
I'll let you give your, your... Oh, go ahead.
Um... We're on planning?
Yes, planning.
Yes, well, I guess we're pending the response from Esquivel, but Oliveras, Four, Wong, Two, Steiger, Four, Jackson, Three, Linker, One, Sablon, Four. Carpenter, three. And that's, I did have, uh, Esquivel, but again, I wasn't informed about...
I can, uh, give some advice on that after consulting here. Uh, what we recommend is if there's consensus around appointing her, that you would hold off on making that appointment until we can confirm that she did in fact decide that she doesn't want to forfeit her other seat. And then leave that open until we can confirm that with the applicant, and then you can make the, another appointment later.
And I think what I understood from counsel is if the appointment happened, she would im- immediately forfeit her board seat.
Right, that's, that's the legal opinion in this case.
That was a legal opinion.
So that's why we advise not appointing her until...
Just not, no.
We confirm that.
That's why she said she would not.
Yeah.
What we don't have tonight is confirmation that she did request to remove her application. So that, that's why I'm suggesting if there was consensus around appointing her, um, instead, leave that seat open for the time being until we can confirm that. And then you have the next meeting on March 15th, you could appoint someone else.
Madam Mayor, did you say, didn't you say that she, she told you she...
Oh, we're waiting to, did you want to, I mean, she did, she withdrew, but...
She told you she withdrew.
If she did tell me she withdrew, she opted not to go to speak with the, um, uh, county board council. So then she said, just, I'm just gonna withdraw my application.
So if she did withdraw her application, um...
And, and that's what I'm informing you tonight, we don't have confirmation that she formally withdrew her application.
Right.
Oh, yeah, you don't.
So we may want to just check with her tomorrow to say, hey, uh, just making sure. And then, and again, this scenario is only if there's consensus around appointing that person.
I do have a confirmation, yes, I received feedback, um, that, and it was recommended that she not be, uh, that she not be appointed. So she is removing her name from consideration.
Can she send an email to the city manager or somebody to... We need, they need that as an official.
Or just a city clerk would be fine.
That'd be great, thank you.
Sure.
So, thank you for that recommendation.
Since she was on my list, um, I, and in District Three, Andrew Mittelman, I would replace.
I would.
I don't have consensus.
Andrew Mittelman. Okay. Everybody, um, did I have a Potemar Roscoe?
I think I gave, yeah.
Oh, yes, you did, okay, so I think you had, you gave me seven. Wong, Steiger, Oliveras, Carpenter?
Yes.
Jackson, Linker, Sablon?
And Squires. Since I don't get Esquivel, I...
Oh, Squires, I see. Okay. You don't get this, I have Squires.
Can I, I had Elizabeth Esquivel on mine as well.
Oh, I see, okay.
And I, I would, I think it would be great, um, because of the, um, activism that I, at least I firsthand witnessed from Mr. Matthew Delgado, to put him on, at least, so I would put him forward instead of Elizabeth Esquivel, because, and I said I wouldn't because I, I just, I was thinking, we don't need, even though we only have one from D3 right now, I am thinking maybe one more person from D1 would be great.
I think Vanessa Castro, who's, has demonstrated, um, you know, an incredible, uh, commitment to her community. She, um, has helped with the broad, bringing that alliance together so that we, you know, have the, um, graffiti abatement committee now that takes care of quite a few things. You know, she was born and bred here, very well-known, um, by many people, not outside of District One as well. And, um, we are talking about representation, so I think it's really important to have a representation from District One on the Planning Commission.
So, so... So, so.
So I'm asking for one, yeah, I'm asking for, for Vanessa Castro to be considered.
So for me, I would, I would put forth Mr. Delgado, um, or for my, if I was to put in instead of Elizabeth. That's what I'd put forward.
I have two Delgados, and I support Vanessa Castro as well.
Well, how many is for Linker? She's in District One as well.
Let's go, let's go down the list.
I think she had consensus, so I, I put forth Linker as well.
Yeah.
I did as well. Oh, you did?
I did, I didn't have Linker on mine.
Yeah, and she was D1, so, so I'm putting forth two people from District One, and only one person from D3, just gonna point that out.
Okay. Let me go down the list really quick, so we can all catch up with where we're at. So looking at consensus among the four council members, District One. I think we're all over the points here. Um, we're gonna have to go down to three. I don't see the consensus on. Oh, wait a minute. So Brenda Wong, everybody was all good with Brenda Wong. Got that down. Let's see, we're, we're all, the next one, okay, so we're gonna have to.
Did anyone else have Danny Theracool? You know, Danny, Danny's another person I think we should help on Planning Commission.
That's just news.
That's only me?
So Brenda is in District Two, so we got one, two. Next is consensus on, so we'll get, we'll go down to the three. We have Dee Olivares, so that's, she's Four. And then.
One more time?
Dee Ol- Dolores Olivares.
Oh, okay, just making sure I didn't miss that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we have Irvin Squires, that's Two. That one has, um, three supports. Preston Jackson, that's Three. Tammy Linker, that's One. Teresita Sablon, that's Four. The one, two, three, four. Five, six, where we have consensus for Three, for Three, um, and I wanna go from there?
For the six, you have Wong, Olivares.
So we have Wong, Olivares, Squires, Jackson, Linker, and Sablon. And we can go from, and I, and I support, let me see, so we have, two, two, three, one.
And then I put forth Matthew Delgado from District One, and I think Mayor Protim Oroscop supported that as well, so you have two for Matthew Delgado from District One.
Did you, I think you supported Matthew Delgado.
I'd support Matthew Delgado for District One as well.
You have three in support of Matthew Delgado.
Okay. Three.
So that leaves us with two representatives from District One, correct?
Mm-hmm. And right now, one from District Three.
And Tammy Linker. Matthew Delgado from One. Tammy Linker. And then Teresita, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We need one more, and we have two representatives from Four, two representatives from Two, two representatives from One, one representative from Three at this time. Who was number three? From number? So number three out of the choices that I heard, Andrew Mittelman, we have two, and I'm fine with putting him back in. And we also have, let's see, who else? And that was really, and Sabrina is Three.
You know, um, for my, for my alternate, I would say, um, I'm going to pull the alternate I had from District Four before I knew Elizabeth was stepping back, who's also from District Three, and I'm going to put forth, um, the alternate, B. Ronald Anderson, from District Three, as the alternate. So you'd have one more representation from District Three.
Nobody's voted for him so far.
Okay, that's fine, I'm still putting them in. I do, there you go.
I'll put Vanessa in as an alternate. I'll put Vanessa in as an alternate. You'll put Vanessa in as an alternate, okay? The one more representative from District One.
I'm sorry, can we run through that list again?
Okay. So we have. The whole list? Yes. Okay. All right. We have Brenda Wong from District Two, Dolores Olivares from District Four, Irvin Squires from District Two, Matthew Delgado from District One, Preston Jackson from District Three, Tammy Linker from District One, Teresita Sablon from District Four. And that's what I have. And Councilmember Alcala would like to include Vanessa Castro from District One, instead of.
Uh, Madam Mayor.
One of the other two.
I'm so sorry to cut in.
Sure.
I, um, I was just looking at the resume for Mr. Anderson, 'cause I think right now it looks like we have representation, two representatives for each of the areas.
Except D3.
Except for District Three.
Which is why I can't move forward, yeah.
Um, and I, I would speak favorably about Ms. Lockhart as well, but I also did want to note for the record that Mr. Anderson has previously served for two terms on a city council, has extensive background with affordable housing, as well as experience with planning. Uh, he has background as well as in environmental matters. So I, I do, I am impressed, I will say that.
Councilmember Early, and, um, Councilmember, um, Neo Potemarosco. We have two votes for Anderson, for District Three.
And I would be putting him forward as the alternate. Just to be clear. And then you would have two representations from District Three.
Yes. That would, so far, I mean, we have two votes for that right now, so that's, just wanna make sure everybody else is.
I'd be comfortable with that as well.
Three votes. And, just to make sure I get. That achieves your equal representation, but that is over the objections of Councilmember And, and I was supportive of having Vanessa Castro, because of her experience, her generational history in this community, and also being that, you know, the gang injunction had a negative impact on the entire family. She's also experienced, where there's gang violence and a negative impact, death in her family, recently, this last year. They revisited that during the release of, of the individual who's in prison. And fortunately, they did not approve a release. And also, because Vanessa has been very involved in the Parks Commission, and is a, I think, a mortgage banker, um, he works in the banking industry for housing, so that Planning Commission background, and just her connection with the community where the Washington specific plan has been revised to include a significant amount of growth in that area where it will take a community member beyond experience, but who is well-networked, to be able to engage with the community, and that's what Vanessa Castro has brought to the table, is significant engagement. And she's also, just, just to add, I appreciate that Chief Strange has included her in the Police Advisory Commission, and she's been providing input. And that is because of her in, um, experience and involvement in the community, and that presents a, um, a unique perspective, but also, you know, taking back to the community ways to enhance, um, a relationship with our local law enforcement community. So, just wanted to.
Madam Mayor, I just want to say, we have a fantastic list of people, I want to thank everybody who submitted applications to serve our community. I know, when I look at this list, it's, it's excruciating to sit and, and pick who we think would be appropriate, and there are other considerations that we've never had in the past, such as, you know, choosing people, and also new representatives, because we want to hear from new voices as well. I agree, uh, that, you know, of the merits, I, I do know Ms. Castro as well, I think that she's a fantastic candidate, and she has shown her advocacy in the city and her, her love as, as a representative of the, the city of West Sacramento for her entire life, as well as many of her family members' lives. I will just say that I, for the record, we have unfortunately not been able to pick some of the incumbents who have dedicated their, uh, you know, exhibited their commitment to the Planning Commission. Um, you know, we have Mr. Steiger, who, who just coordinated our Veterans Day Parade, and is an absolutely, he, he and his wife are exceptional members of the West Sacramento community, was not chosen, chosen for the Planning Commission. So, um, if we all took turns going down the list, I know that there would be favorable things that could take up a whole meeting and a half, but, um, I just wanted to reiterate the amount of talent that, for folks that have stepped forward, and we are very fortunate. We are very fortunate, 'cause it's a lot of work.
We heartily agree.
Yeah.
Tough choices we have to make.
Yeah, very.
Yes.
Thank you.
And some will not make it, and some will, but, uh, yes, I agree, and I really appreciate those that have contributed in their applications. All right. Any other comments? All right, we will, we will move on, and to transportation, if that's okay with everybody, or we all understand where we landed there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, transportation. We have, you ready? Yes.
Abteen Keshkuli, District Four. Alex McCreden, District Three. Cody Sears, District Three. Sarah Zuniga, District One. Valerie Zimmer, District One. Warris Banks, District Two. Yan Nguyen, District Four. And altern, alternate Matthias Hess, District Four.
Councilmember Alcala?
Okay. Abteen Keshkuli, District Four. Alex McCreden, Three. Roy Sines, Three. Sarah Zuniga, One. Valerie Zimmer, One. Evan Squires, Two. And Cody Sears, Three. Did I, did I go over? I'm sorry.
Seven, you need one more.
One more. Yan Nguyen, District Four. I was trying to spread it out. Roy is Three. Oh, you know what? I'm sorry, let me go with Warris Banks, because.
Okay.
I do see Two, and I, and I think it's really important to have.
Roy is Three, and Evan is what?
Um, it's actually Irvin, and we already put them, again, don't know their pronouns, on, exactly, on the Planning Commission already.
Who did we put? I'm sorry. Irvin is on the Planning Commission.
Irvin is on the planning.
Yeah. All right. Okay. Those are your choices, okay? Councilmember Early?
Um, let's see. So Abteen Keshkuli, D4. Alex McCreden, D3. Cody Sears, D3. Matthias Hess, D4. Sarah Zuniga, D1. Valerie Zimmer, D1. Yan Nguyen, D4. And Warris Banks, D2. And, um, I think Cody Sears as the alternate. I could go with Cody Sears, or, um, with Yan Nguyen as the alternate. And originally, Warris Banks was gonna be my alternate, but that individual's the only one represented from D2, and so I want to make sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Sapiethia Hope, did you include Matthias Hess?
I had Matthias as my alternate.
Oh, he's your alternate, okay.
Right. That would be fine with me, as the alternate.
Mayor Potemarosco?
Cody Sears, District Three. McCreden, District Three. Keshkuli, District Four. Zuniga, District One. Zimmer, District One. Banks, District Two. Hess, District Four. Yan Nguyen, District Four.
I found consensus among Abteen, Keshkuli, Alex McCreden, Cody Sears, Sarah Zuniga, Valerie Zimmer, Warris Banks, and, um, between Yan and Roy, there were Three, and One for Roy. I'm supportive of Roy, but I can, I think we have Yan.
I said Yan.
Okay, so we have One, we have Three Fours, Two Threes, One One, and One Two.
I have Two Ones. I have Sarah Zuniga from D1.
Sarah Zuniga's One, yes.
And Valerie Zimmer from D1, so I have Two Ones.
Yes, you have Two Ones, One Two, which is always hard, I get it, so it's gonna have to be an alternate between Three and Four.
This, this, I've been struggling, 'cause this is.
This is a really hard one for me, too.
Moving all of it.
That's the one where I just ran out of Twos.
I get it.
Okay, so.
Fine.
I know, I think I found myself in that same predicament, so, um, that would be, let me, let me, um, so Roy is not going to be included, since it was not a consensus for Roy.
Roy? I think Roy would have been excellent, I mean, he's been with the legislature for many years.
He has been.
He has served on many committees, been a longtime West Sacramento resident, and.
Yes. He did, he did serve under Jim Cooper.
Yes.
I think as a, is it led director, chief, chief of staff? He's got a lot of experience.
I think he was the chief of staff, he's, he's.
Okay.
Right. There's a lot of experience that I think we're gonna be missing out on.
I think so, too. I think he has a lot of experience, and been very resourceful in the community. Um, I would agree.
Can you run through what you're recommending?
Well, it's pretty much everybody on the list. My, and, and Abteen, Alex, Cody, Matthias, Sarah, Valerie, Warris, and Yan.
Okay.
That's who I have. That's what I think everybody's.
Just a tiny bit slower, I'm so sorry, I was trying to keep up.
Oh, sorry. Abteen?
Mm-hmm.
Alex?
Yep.
Cody?
Mm-hmm.
Matthias?
Mm-hmm.
Sarah?
Mm-hmm.
Valerie?
Mm-hmm.
Warris?
Mm-hmm.
And Yan?
Yep.
All right? Okay.
District representation, just making sure, it was, it was challenging.
Oh, it was.
There was a lot of good applicants, but.
Okay. I've actually got all of these written down, I'll, I'll clean it up, Madam Clerk, in the end. And, uh, so everybody now knows who we all agree to at this point? Okay, good. Um, and I'll, I'll open it up for public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
We have no requests to speak on this item.
Oh, what, can, I'll, I'll allow an opportunity for.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Can you submit your, in writing, and, uh, it is, it is required to be submitted in writing before. Since public comment is still open, you'll have an opportunity to share public comment.
Uh, Mayor, in the meantime, uh, just to make a suggestion, what we could do, 'cause I believe our city manager was following along, uh, tracking the names, and I know you were as well, do you want to, uh, perhaps either you or Amanda can read the full slate, and just make sure that.
Sure.
Our notes are correct?
That would be great.
Uh, would you like to do it, or would you like Amanda to read her?
You have Amanda, please.
Okay.
Amanda, please, sir.
Okay.
You don't mind.
And then, and then, uh, we do, the city attorney does recommend, yeah, go ahead, have public comment before you vote, so we can follow up on that.
Okay, so I was trying to keep up, hopefully.
Okay.
I got it all. Um, okay, so for Arts Commission, I have Loey Ball, Gleason, Hanson, Peterson, Sanchez, Bell, Rodriguez, and George as the alternate.
Yes. Is that what you have? That's what I have.
For Appeals, I have Heinz, Levine, and Gould, and leaving two, um, two seats open, and as well as the alternate open, so three total seats open.
I thought we had William Hutchins on that, from D4?
No, I thought we took him out.
Oh, we did? Okay.
I have him crossed off, but.
Did we put him somewhere?
Do you want him, William Hutchins?
No, I, um, I, we already have two people from D4 on there. No, I, I, we already have two people from D Four on there, so that's why I don't think we added William as an additional D Four representative.
We could add him if you're fine.
Well, only because there were, there were so few applicants.
I know, I know.
I mean, I appreciate the fact we're going to go out and try to get, encourage people to apply, but, but this individual did apply, and we still have a vacancy.
And I'm fine with including him.
I, I, I'll include William as well. We'll still have two vacancies, by the way. You'll have a vacant and you'll have an alternate still vacant.
Sure. If consensus, I'll support. Okay.
Are you good?
Got it.
Okay.
Okay, so we've got Hines, Levine, Hut, Hines, Levine, Gould, and Hutchins, and two vacant positions, including the alternate.
Yes.
Disaster, I have Casiato and Bustillos. Bustillos, and Bustillos is the alternate. For EDH, Kim White, Gera Singh, Vasquez, Judy, and Rodriguez, with Kemp as the alternate.
Everybody?
Yes.
All caught up? Okay.
Um, Environment Commission, McFall, Cordonno, Cialino, Friswell, Blondo, Reed, and Solario, with Julian as the alternate.
Yes.
All right. And for Parks, I have Ahmad, Galvin, Janz, Schatzel as the alternate, Emilio Emiliano Rosas, Ramsey, Hargrove, and Maldonado.
Everybody okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Planning Commission, I have Wong, Olivares, Delgado, Squires, Anderson as the alternate, Jackson, Linker, and Saba.
Okay.
And lastly, Transportation, Keshkuli, McCready, Sears, Hess as the alternate, Zuniga, Zimmer, Banks, and Nguyen.
Everybody good with all the, all the recommendations so far?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, I'm opening up the public comment. Are there any requests to speak?
Rhonda Pope Flores?
I apologize, I missed that one. I've been under the weather, so I apologize. So I cram my comment in, into my first comment, so I'll reiterate it here. You know, now that there are districts, I would like to see a process where all districts are represented. And I just heard where some, you had a few, it, it was almost like throwing us a couple of scraps. Thank you for that. Thank you for the scraps that you've thrown us. But what, what should it be is an actual formula where now that you're under districts, where you require this. You should have a representative regardless from every district. So I just, you, you, you gave up a really good person, Vanessa Castro. You let her go because of, you know, some incumbents don't make it, as Councilmember Roscoe says. That's really unfortunate because this has been an, a citizen who has represented our community so strongly, so respectfully, so gracefully, and you just put her by the wayside so that you can have your new blood, the people that agree with you, the people that support your agendas. It's really unfortunate. It's sad to sit in each one of these meetings and see what transpires, how it transpires, and how you have your people that you already have lined up that you want to, you know, push your agendas. Also heard mention of the past mayor. Past mayor isn't here anymore. Past mayor's got a road named after him for a park that he couldn't even finish in his two-plus decades of representing this community. Couldn't even get Bright Park done. I'm sad. Develop a process where it's equal and fair. Thank you.
We have no additional requests to speak.
Right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll close the public comment, bring it back to council. Are there any additional comments before we take the vote? I just want to say, thank you so much for this collaborative effort here today. Yeah. I, I know, I know there was some, some, you know, this is a, a challenging process for us all, I think, and in any city. You have such outstanding applicants who present themselves, and I, I feel strongly about certain applicants as well, but if there's no consensus among council members, where, that's what I've heard, then they will not be selected. And that is the process that we have. And I just want to applaud and thank all of the commissioners who, in the last two years, have put in some long, long hours studying our city, giving up their time, especially during COVID, and then in the transition, I look forward to working with our new commissioners, our new appointed commissioners here, and reaching out to them and congratulating them personally, and thanking them for, you know, taking the time to submit an application, and look forward to bringing them into being more civically engaged, because some of them I, I don't personally know, so that they can contribute in some way or another in what we're doing in the city, so that we have more, more engagement. And with that, I'll accept a vote.
Mayor, just, I'm sorry, one, one note that's kind of important here. So first of all, I just want to echo your comments. Thank you to, to the mayor and to the council for a, a process that really represented getting to consensus. So much of what you're doing is unprecedented in, in this process, you know. I've been here a long time, I haven't seen it go quite this way, but it was, it was good to watch y'all get to an agreement here. We do always recognize outgoing commissioners, so that's part of the process going forward, but, but the, the note I definitely wanted to emphasize is that we would recommend making these appointments effective as of April 1st.
Okay.
The reason for that is because we have important commission business, including the Planning Commission, that has a meeting on the 16th, and there simply wouldn't be enough time to do the training that we normally do in the orientation for new commissioners to allow that meeting to take place, at least effectively, within two weeks. And so recommendation would be to make the appointments effective in April 1st, and that'll give us time to do the training and orientation and allow commissions to meet as planned for this month.
Then that would, that would need to be specifically mentioned, correct?
Yes, in the, in the, in the motion, we would say effective April 1st.
Okay. Thank you. All right, with that, I'll accept the motion with the recommendation from our city manager.
So moved.
So I, I would move that we accept the appointees that we discussed this evening that we found consensus around, and that would start as of April 1st.
All right. And, second?
I got a first.
That's my second.
You're the second.
There you go. It's cool.
All right. Mayor Potem Roscoe moved, and Councilmember Early seconded. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Councilmember Solpezio Hull?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. I just want to say thank you to all the council members for the unanimous vote, because I think it really shows and demonstrates to our commissioners that we fully back them and their role in representing, representing the community, because I, I think that is an important achievement that we have now achieved tonight, and appreciate all the staff work that was put into this to make this happen here tonight. With that, we have council calendar.
Good evening. No report tonight, thank you.
City manager report?
I actually have several items tonight. I want to start by addressing, it was mentioned earlier, the Cabaldin Parkway signs. The intent has always been to put those signs up when they're all ready to go and we have time to schedule and hold an appropriate event to unveil the signs. I'm, I've been informed that three of the signs were inadvertently put up today just because of a miscommunication. That's not all the signs that are going to be installed, but three of them did actually get put up. We have since, they're been removed or in the process of being removed, and the TBG signs will go back up until we have that event where they'll be unveiled. We don't plan to do that until probably sometime in the spring, once the weather's good and we put all the finishing touches on the signs, the new signs. So I apologize for that. That was a miscommunication, you know, from the top down, and we'll, we'll make sure that that's corrected and we schedule the event appropriately and unveil the signs at the right time. Few other updates on, first on grants. I know the mayor has, I, I informed her, and I know she heard from James Corliss at Secog, some good news. The city received two major grants through Secog, Secog's Green Means Go program, which is a program designed to fund underground utilities to advance infill housing development or infill development in what have been designated as green zones, which are primarily areas where Secog agrees that growth should happen. So we got $4 million for undergrounding utilities in the Washington District, which is a follow-up to the 17-plus million-dollar project we did recently to, for Streetscape and utilities out there. So it's another phase of that project, so $4 million there. And then $650,000 to advance our Sacramento Avenue Complete Streets Corridor Improvement Plan. So that's planning money, but we are very excited about that project because it will lead to direct improvements and meaningful improvements along the Sacramento Avenue Corridor to enhance, you know, bike ped safety and, you know, the, some of the, the gaps that we know are out there in infrastructure on that corridor. We also just submitted an application last week to the federal government for the RACE Program. RACE used to be called BUILD. Before that, it was TIGER, but it's, it's the federal government's big transportation grant fund, and this is for the Enterprise Crossing Project. We applied for $5 million, what we call PAED, which is Project Approval Environmental Document. Basically, that's the planning, engineering, and design environmental phase, so we're hopeful that we'll get that funding and really advance that project, which is a, a top council priority this year. And then lastly, I just wanted to follow up on the council's adoption of the Women's History Month proclamation, and also in recognition of International Women's Day, which is a week from today on the 8th. Just want to let you know to watch out for it. We took a photo today celebrating the, the amazing women we have in leadership positions in the city. Just, I think it's notable that six of our nine departments are, are led by women, and in addition to our city clerk. So we'll be posting that all over the city's social media next week. Obviously, you know, the, the council will be celebrated as well, so I just wanted to have, give you a heads up about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you recognizing our, our female leaders here in the city administration, so thank you for all you do. All right. That's it? Okay. City Attorney Report?
Staff direction from City Council? I just want to acknowledge all the hard work from our city administration now that COVID-19 emergency declaration has been done. It's not over, I know. It's still, you know, affecting all of us in one way or another, and I just want to express my appreciation and continue to ask for an opportunity to, find an opportunity to celebrate and appreciate, you know, show our appreciation to our staff in the future, in the near future. That would be, that would be great. And, let's see, I think we're adjournment at this point. Accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Oh, Councilmember Early moved, and Mayor Potem Roscoe seconded. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Solpezio Hull?
Aye.
Councilmember Early?
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Roscoe?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero?
Aye. We are adjourned.